And here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Unanimously passed. Number five, Madam Clerk. Conflict of interest.
Rule six, part six, rule thirteen E of the 2024 Rules of Procedure requires members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Please state if you have any potential conflicts. Mayor Holden?
No.
Mayor Persson Myers?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Smith?
No ma'am.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Dyer?
No.
And Commissioner Park?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Number six, consideration of approving the minutes from November nineteen meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Unanimously passed. Number seven, public comments. I have a list is... Mr. Bauer? You have the floor, sir. You know the routine.
Jim Bauer, three twenty-nine Ocean Boulevard West. Items twenty and items twenty-one about the agreement to terminate the Holden Beach Pier design. I applaud it and I hope it goes that way. Would also give a great time to broken record here again, ask the town. Buy them what the town wants, then you'd have your mandate. You would only be asking the town, not the surrounding communities, about what they should want to do for the pier, because after all, it's coming out of our pocketbook and our pocketbook alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will Carter?
Will Carter, one oh eight Starfish Drive. I just came here to say, we've got a gang problem here on Holden Beach. There's nothing you can fix out here. We got a gang problem. And what it is, I think they come from up north. And we've had it for a long time, but it's just gotten bad here in the last few years. But what it is, I call them the elder tire roads. And what they want to do is turn our vacation community into a retirement community. And what they've done is they only push the things they want to push. Everything else, they drug down, slowed down. I sat here and watched twenty-seven years for us to build a park over there. And then I watched the terminal groin with Bowhead get yanked out of the jaws. And it's all because these people want to have a retirement community here. They don't want a vacation resort. And, you know, it only takes, we've only had four hundred people ever vote here. That's two hundred houses on this beach. We've got twenty-three hundred houses on this beach. So all the other two thousand forty and fifty-year-olds, they're trying to raise their family and rent their house and trying to make a go of it, just like my dad did. My dad had to rent the house, say sold half of it at one time, just so we could make it. But they have no consideration for these other two thousand families. And they have no vote. It's taxation without representation. The only people to be bored here, I mean, you can get it down to about twelve to twenty people. You go back ten years, you look at everybody that's involved, it's the same ten to twenty people. And they're here and they're over at other associations. And they've always been doing this since I was in nineteen seventy. Mr. Evans and what was his name, Mr. Clark? They were some of the first ones and they didn't like what was going on. And ever since then, there's been a new crop of them. The old ones die out, some new ones come in. They want it to be their vacation home. They want to put a gate up on the bridge. They don't want anybody here. If they wanted somebody here, if they wanted a pier, they would have said, you know, let's get a pier. Let's see what it's going to cost to get a concrete pier. Let's see what it's going to cost to get a wood pier. Then we can get two estimates down here and we decide if we can get the money. But they're scared that we'll get the money. That's why you don't see anybody asking for a, how about a design for a new, brand-new concrete pier, brand-new building. Brand-new wood pier, brand-new building. You don't want to see them. They won't do that, because they want to drag it out and drag it out and drag it out. They took twenty-seven years on this park out here. When John Litvinenko was on the board at Property Owners Association, he got the bridge, he got the park. He called me on the phone, asked if I wanted to help. I said, no, John. I said, I tried to do that at the turn of the century and I worked on it, worked on it, and they beat me at every corner. He finally got it done. He went down to the Property Owners Association. You know what they did? They stood up from the floor. They voted him off the board. He called me, he said, Will, you won't believe what just happened. I said, what, John? He said, they just voted me off the floor, the Property Owners Association, off the board, because I got the park for it. And Alan and I were down here when we dedicated the park. John came back down, but he sold his house, moved back and carried it. He said, they don't want the people, other people coming over here and using our facilities. He told me that. Now, he told me some other things that I can't tell you right now. But this is what's happening with the pier right now. We've had it for three years. All it take, and the people that gave us this building, they all retire as too, and they're the ones that started this three minutes that you can only talk, because they didn't want to hear us talking about what we needed to talk about. Thank you.
Okay, we're on number eight. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Since 2021, we've been working as partners with the Army Corps of Engineer on a coastal storm mitigation study. And the Corps is here tonight. I think they have five members of their project team. Our project manager is Brendan Dooley. He's accompanied by Bob Kiesler and other members of their team. And they have a presentation for you, for you guys to consider termination of the study. In your memo, you'll see that I've told you that we've been briefed and the slides point to the fact that their modeling doesn't show that it's in the national interest to have a beach project or a project for the waterway side. So I'd ask Brendan and Bob and whoever from your team wants to come forward to the podium.
As you're coming forward, I'd like to thank the Corps of Engineers for all the hard work and the relationship we've enjoyed over the years. And some of you people like Bob have been around a long time and fought a lot of wars and thank you for all that you've done.
Yeah, Mayor, we'd like to echo that too and that the town has been, you know, excellent partner with this, everything we've needed from the start of this study.
The town, can you, is this on? Okay, yeah. The town has been an excellent partner in this study. As soon as we signed the agreement to go into this study, although we're here tonight giving some results that are, you know, less than favorable when we started out, the town has been with us right by our side the whole time, giving us information. Obviously, we've cost shared the study, but, you know, data requests, support, all the things we needed as a team, they were there at the table with us the whole time. So we really appreciate that. And so, yeah, I guess, should we go ahead and get started?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. So like Christie said, she kind of summarized it really. My name's Brendan Dooley, I'm the project manager. This is Michael Kastner. He was one of the lead economists on our study. So in that determination that Christie said, where we looked at a beach nourishment project and potential alternatives to look at the back bay, we're required to do some economic analysis. It says, is it in the federal interest by the Corps of Engineers? We have a set of rules, a set of planning guidance that says we have to go through all these things to show it's worth spending a federal dollar. And the return that we get on that is in the federal interest from the Corps of Engineers' perspective. And so that's what we've been doing the past couple of years. Michael is going to walk through some of the specifics of the economics. Basically, our recommendation at this point is, since there is no project that looks to be in the federal interest, we recommend taking all the data analysis, all the reporting that has been done to date, finalizing it, putting it into a format that the town can use for their own nourishment and own coastal storm risk program going forward and handing that over. We feel that at this point, we've really looked at the alternatives that we could. None of them could be carried forward at this point. However, we've done a lot of good research on specifically borrow areas for locations of sand, for future nourishments, however the town wishes to pursue that. So our recommendation is to wrap it up where we are now, hand over all the data and go from there. But to get into the details a little bit, realize we have just a short amount of time. Michael's going to walk through some of the basic analysis. And it's a lot of stuff, like we've been working the past three years on this, so it's a lot condensed into a couple of slides. If there is need from the commissioners or anybody for follow-on meetings, anything like that information, we're happy to do that. So, thank you.
Yeah, can you use the microphone though, so people can hear it?
Of course, yes.
And you'll just want to point that, to change your slides at that screen.
Thank you. All right. Hopefully, everyone can see some screen. Otherwise, I'm just going to read it out for you. So the federal methodology for walking through what we do economically is we're looking over a fifty-year period of analysis. We use the tools, the Beach FX and G2 CRM. The Beach FX tool allows us to analyze from the beach side of things. The G2 CRM, Generation Two Coastal Risk Model, allows us to look from the back bay, on the backside of the island. So we look, use both tools to try to account for damages in your study area on the beach and in the back of the island. So the benefits are determined by damages prevented, and then we are also going to look at the cost estimates. Net benefits are the damages prevented versus the cost estimates. If the cost is higher than the damages, then you're not going to have a net beneficial plan. And that's bottom line upfront in military terms, that's what we're finding in this study. Recreation benefits were estimated but are considered incidental per USAC's policy. This is a very important point, because the way the town measures recreation is important personally the way we at USAC's measure recreation. Recreation only makes up a small part of what we're able to use to justify projects. And if we do not find enough damages in terms of structural damages, physical damages, recreation really is only a small consideration. And so that's a big difference between what we do versus what the town does and what the town takes into consideration. Now, this just walks through the Beach FX like I briefly explained. This captures the impact on the beach side of things. Compares damages from the future without project to the future with project. Future without assumes that we are not taking any action. Future with assumes that we would take action to re-nourish the beach, separate from what the town already does, re-nourish and re-nourish. G2 CRM is again, this is along the backside, the entire island as well. We model, these model areas, we're looking at volume stage curves. So essentially, what that means is when a storm comes, it brings some volume of water. And if that volume of water is doing damage to these twenty-three hundred structures that we do have here on the island, that you do have here on the island, then that's what we would see in that model. This, these graphs here represent our look at what the projects we could do in terms of a twenty-five-foot firm over a twenty-year process and eight-year process, or a fifty-foot firm over a ten-year cycle. Then, as you can see, all of the graphs are below these bars. And essentially, those bars represent thresholds for costs. And because the damages do not amount to such that you're overcoming the cost, we are finding that there is not a beneficial plan in terms of re-nourishment from the federal perspective. This further goes into detail, we analyzed this, I worked alongside a team of four total economists on this. And they were able to take a look, and I know it's really hard to tell based on how small this screen is we have in front of us, but the, there's an outline within there and an outline without on the outside, and the costs are just way bigger than what we're seeing in terms of damages. I believe the costs are in orange and the damages are blue. And we are just not finding that there is a beneficial plan, even in a small segment of a community. Part of that is the mobilization cost of just getting a dredge going is very high. So any action is costly. This is the back bay side, and this is where we're finding there are damages. But the damages likely are something to be expected just living in a beach community. So water is going to encroach during storms, but this town does a very good job of elevating their structures. They have good building codes. They have resilient emergency action plans in place. So what we are finding is that this community is very resilient and there's not a lot we can do to reduce damages. What we would typically do to reduce these type of damages along the backside are elevate homes or floodproof commercial businesses. We looked at floodproofing commercial businesses. Again, the costs were way higher than the damages reduced. And elevating existing residential structures, there's only so many on the island. And we found again that the costs are in excess of the damages that we were able to find. That is to say though, again, it's not a bad thing that what we're finding here. What we're actually finding is you have a resilient community, you have really very good building codes. The next fifty years, your community is likely to continue to exist. And that is, that's good, that's good, that's good news. So overall, we have some study products. And again, we're getting towards the end of the book here. So as you know, the appendices come at the end of the book and are important to showing you what we did during this. That is what we're coming up to. But some of these study products, Brendan, if you want to walk us through?
Yeah, sure. So this is our last slide here. We'll hopefully have a little time for questions. But yeah, so we'll have a summary of the whole analysis of what we did. The geotech piece, which I alluded to a little bit earlier, we contracted a vibrant effort to try to locate quantity and quality sand offshore in a reasonable location to Holden Beach. All of that will be handed over. The coastal modeling, all of the inputs and outputs that we've run and done, we'll pass those on as well as the economics. So we'll basically be passing over appendices that show our analysis to date for each of these disciplines. One thing that's still in progress, that will be a worthwhile thing for the town, is this cultural resources survey. So once you find a borrow area, you got to make sure that there's no shipwreck, Blackbeard's treasure, as my boss says. And make sure that, you know, you could use that as a borrow area in terms of cultural resource perspective. And so we're in the middle of that effort. We expect to have a final product back in June. So as part of the geotech and the cultural, we'll basically be able to hand over and say, here's what we think is good sand, this is the amount, and this is all the, a lot of the clearance you need to go ahead and use it. So that's one of the positives that's come from the study and something we'll be handing over. And then also, just from a project management standpoint, we'll be handing over a detailed accounting summary. So the conclusion is that right now, the study has not proven to find a cost shareable project in the federal interest, either on the beach side or addressing the back bay damages. The management plan that the town has in place right now is doing a really good job. We recommend wrapping up all these products and transferring all the data that we have to the town. And that's the last slide, but what I want, what I did want to say, if we have some time for, do we have some time for questions? Okay. So we have our coastal engineer, Grace Mays, and our lead planner, Keith Keeney, and then Christie already introduced my boss, Bob Kiesler. We've all been very involved in the study. So any questions that I can't answer, these guys all can. So that's all we have. Thank you for your time and thanks for having us down here.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Parker?
It's my understanding that you guys already have the money in hand to complete the closeout?
That's correct, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. I was at the conference that you spoke at in Wilmington talking about sand wars. So is there anything we can do to protect these borrow areas for our use?
So Bob might have something to add here, but I think the way that the state, it's a kind of a state managed, state and federal government manage, outside of three miles is managed by Boham, within three miles is the state. And right now, to the best of my knowledge, it's really on a first come, first served. Whoever gets their permit in the door for their beach project is, there's no real overall management of who sand, what sand goes where. Right now, it's just if you have a project, you submit a permit, you show your borrow area, and then you get permitted to use that borrow area.
So there were no permits associated with your work?
No, sir, but a good, if you were to, if the town were to go forward to get a permit to renew or update their current project, a lot of the data that we gathered about the borrow sources would be what you would need for that permit application.
Okay, and you're providing that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more commissioners? Commissioners, do you want, allow the audience to ask a question or not? Hi, Christie?
I just had one additional comment to add, and the Corps can validate this, but in our discussions, one of the things that I wanted to highlight was the way the town of Holden Beach views risk is different than what they can factor into their economic model. So they just view the beachfront properties as a property at X value, and it's not taking in what the tourism economy does for the town. So it's not rated in that manner the same way we would view a loss if we didn't have that property because of what we would lose in accommodations tax. So I just wanted to discuss the national model, which is how we would view it here.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the way that we're required to look at these projects is becoming harder and harder to justify in other beach towns as well across the east coast, southeast region.
All right. Thank you. I know all of you are going to be disappointed if you don't get to stay the rest of the meeting, but we understand that you've had a long day and not going to offend us if you leave, but you're welcome to stay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, this, take action. The next step is to make a motion, Christie. So I'll make a motion to receive the report and initiate termination of the study.
Motion is your second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Unanimously approved. Thanks again, Corps of Engineers. Please, Chief.
Good evening. Hope you're all doing okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see some smiles, good. So the police report this month is, well, from November, looks good. Not a lot to be concerned about. One thing I wanted to point out was on the very first page there, animal control calls, you'll notice, thirteen, which is a little higher than us for typical, especially for this time of year. So what that is, is a thirteen-hundred block. We've actually got a stray dog that we are still trying to get our hands on. I don't know if, I know some of the community is aware of it, just wanted to make the commissioners aware and let the community know. We are still working on it. The short story is someone got a shelter pet and it got out, and then nobody's been able to get their hands back on it again. So we're, we're working on getting that back under control for them and trying to help them out with that. So we've had a lot of calls down in that area, so. Other than that, it's really, like I said, nothing of great concern in the, in the report. We had a good turnout for the turkey trot there Thanksgiving. I don't know the exact number, Christie might confirm this, but I was told it was somewhere around five hundred. I mean, I know it was a crowd, so, but about five hundred is what we had. It'll be in the twenties and forties again this weekend. We got out of the cool weather, back into some seventies, and it's going to get cold again, so bundle up. And I wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Chief? Have you had, have you had any luck at all recruiting any new officers, sir?
We have not, but not from lack of trying. And I've actually, Christie and I had this conversation at the end of last week, not the beginning of this one, the end of last week. And we were trying to come up with some game plans and some new ideas. And eventually, sooner than later, we're going to bring some stuff back to the board.
That's what I was hoping that you would.
Correct. What I don't want to do is bring something incomplete. I have a million ideas. We've thrown them all against the wall, and we're trying to come up with the ones which we feel like are the most reasonable that we can bring back to the board and say, hey, this is, this is a direction we feel like we can move forward in.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, yep.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you all as well.
Mr. Evans, number ten?
Good afternoon. Just like the chief, there ain't nothing really stands out. The report looks, looks pretty normal. We've got twenty-nine active new home permits. The active permits, the open permits are a little out of sync at four hundred and forty-five. That's the permits that we're working every day. Some of these permits are the remodels and the new homes that have gotten started, along with the repairs are a little bit more in-depth. And you can look at the fees that were collected, and you can see that they're larger projects. And so they're sitting in the files, because it takes longer for us to get around, for them to get to the point where they can call and move forward. So that's why there's a discrepancy there. The permits issued over thirty thousand, you'll see that number's gone up, it's forty-seven. That's, that's an indicator of high cost of construction. Permits issued over one hundred thousand is five. And then, of course, the substantial improvements is zero. Permits issued waiting pickup is twenty. Total permits is four hundred and ninety-four. Permits in review right now are four. There is a stack on the easel over there that has actually come through after this was, I mean, the whole easel's covered since this report was made, because the report was only running through the sixth. The CAMA issued, it's three, and the zoning issued was nineteen. There was a hundred and twelve inspections done. That's one of the lowest we've ever had. And like I said, I contribute that to complicated construction that's going on right now and the cold weather. So it's kind of slowing down. There'll be a lot, the total inspections made was two hundred and nineteen. We have an upstick in dune markings, which means that that's usually an indication we're getting ready to get an influx of construction. They start marking the vegetation lines and the water lines when the construction starts to pick up, because that's an indicator to go start to go. So we've had quite a bit of those. But, I mean, it looks good over there. I mean, people are working, there's a lot going on in this report.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you, sir. Mr. McRae? Money, man?
This month's report looks very similar to last month. Had alarm still behind from last year, but that's not really a concern. Concerned bills went out a little later, January, February timeframe, should have a good picture of what we got. Parking and occupancy tax, keep tracking a little bit higher. Parking revenue should go up next report a little bit more significantly, because that'll be the first captured month of off-season paid parking. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, got any questions? All right.
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ferguson, number twelve?
Yes, sir. From the interim town manager's report, on our Greensboro Street lift station, the DEQ offered a fund that you guys passed at your last board meeting was returned to the state on November twenty-second. Copy of insurance in Exhibit B were executed by our contractor, which is what we were waiting on, to issue a notice to proceed. They had an updated certificate of insurance that came through on December fourth. The notice to proceed was processed and returned to our engineer on last Monday, the tenth. And Mr. Clemmons met on-site with our contractor last week. As far as the Key Bridge items, Avenue E, the contractor started work on-site November twenty-fifth. Eight oh one has had its final inspection as of twelve-four, and we held a quarterly meeting on twelve-four. You just heard the CSRM study update. That will now require action on the federal level as a follow-up that will begin as early as tomorrow. As far as the recycling program, that is in the agenda packet for later this evening. Everyone, please be mindful of your renewals with your intent to renew for the upcoming year. As far as what used to be known as earmarks and now is congressionally directed spending, spending on the Senate side and community project funding on the House side, the BOC should start to consider what your requests are going to be. It can be a potential January agenda topic, depending on how the federal budget schedule is coming together. Right now, everything seems to be continuing resolution talks, but the timing of the forms released from the legislators are unknown, but you will need to consider things that we've done recently, like the five-one-one-three funding, Lockwood Valley inlet, and any policies you want to continue with. And I will be in DC the last week of March to work on that the way we normally do. So we would be meeting with them in office, and we would want to be firm ahead of time on our paperwork for what we're asking for. As far as employee updates, Public Works Department gained an employee in mid-November, and that replaces the vacancy left by Scott Cunningham when he retired. And just announced to us this past week, Ms. Margaret Lancaster, who has been with the town for twenty-eight years, is going to be retiring. Since the time of your report in this packet, Holden Beach Harbor's CAMA permit renewal has come through. Permit renewals take months at a time. We've been working on this for several months, and all the canal subdivisions are staggered. So Holden Beach Harbor CAMA permit came through. We're still working on the paperwork for We're still working on the paperwork for the Corps and DWR for their side. Heritage Harbor's permit is due up in February, and we're currently working on that one for renewal through CAMA. And then Harbor Acres is in September, so that will follow along in a few months to start on that renewal. And then additionally, gained some more information about bike lanes. You guys had Mr. Hewitt looking into bike lanes. He had had some back and forth with DOT. We were waiting on an answer. They are going to try to get you some paperwork by the January meeting, but with the holidays and when our agenda packet would be due, they can't promise. But it looks very promising that we're going to have a maintenance agreement, and it also looks very promising that the information he presented to them with a quote from a vendor has been that they will agree to pay for quarterly maintenance through the DOT budget. We'll have to run it through our books where we pay the vendor and they reimburse us. So I expect you to have something as, in the form of an agreement and a budget amendment that we would have to do to show it on both sides. And then if we move to the next page there, as far as your number two goal, ADA self-assessment, we decided last month, the board said that could be in-house, but Tim was supposed to bring you guys a timeline and outline. He anticipates having that for the January meeting and the area of responsibilities outlined out to the side, so that's fallen in their wheelhouse. The ADA bathroom, Block Q, we have a mandatory pre-bid conference tomorrow afternoon, and then a bid opening on January 14. That's fallen to staff and the architect. The fire station upgrades, the fire department is currently updating their mainland facility, and you guys heard a little bit about them using our EOC. That seems to be the top priority right this second. Some of them are using this facility right now, so it's kind of at a standstill until they get back up with Mr. Evans on moving forward with something on our side here on the island. Audio/video upgrades, after benchmarking, we're working with the vendor to move forward with a quote, and staff should have that quote in the next couple of weeks. The concert venue at the last meeting, you guys said you would put that back on in the agenda if you wanted to bring it up again, so that falls to the BOC if you want to end up doing that. The website, it was updated a few years ago, the project page added, and we're looking at just the accessibility component as part of the ADA assessment. So that will fall in the timeline that Mr. Evans is providing. Peer repair replacement, the RFUs are in hand. You guys will be taking some sort of action tonight. And the vacuum bypass system, it's in Public Works Director Clemmons's wheelhouse to get you an answer as he researches it more.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. So on the Greensboro lift station, what is your projection that we'll get started on that? Sounds like we're pretty close to actual.
We are pretty close. They should be refining their, the engineer asked the question of the contractor, and they should be refining a timeline to get to us. But right now, I'm thinking January on what they said last in the meeting we were in, and when I get an updated timeline, then I'll let the board know.
Anybody else?
Well, I have one more, well, a few more. On the Key Bridge items, is this the very last one, the Avenue E? Is that the last item that we, I guess maybe that's you or Tim?
It, it is the last one, but we do have to still add mats at 801 to finish out the project. Those have to be ordered, and we need to do some measurements and get those ordered. Is there anything else you want to add, Tim?
The, the mats are in addition. That is town addition, the ADA component to get them onto the beach with Avenue E will be complete. But I think that the town, in the best interest of what we were trying to achieve there, we, we've gone forward with matting, and we will also be bringing some additional matting in areas so that we can extend that. We were hoping to have an extension at 401, but they're not part of the agreement.
Okay.
Avenue E is the finish.
And when do you expect to complete the avenue? Because I know, like, the end of March was the original date, but you were.
Avenue E is scheduled, there was a timeline, and I don't know if we, but we have a, we have a project management, a project guideline. The deadline we have for that is the second, I mean, the first of February for the Avenue E project to be complete. On our project deadline in the original, not for the Key Bridge, but for the town's project, we had it originally at February 14, which would get us, I believe, is 22 days, 32 days under the, the agreement. But the agreement is not finalized on that day. We can extend it if, if necessary.
Right.
But I'm pretty sure we're going to beat the deadline.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Kristy.
One question. Under congressional-directed spending, the bottom, I understand stormwater, I understand Lockwood File Anlet. What is policies?
So this past year, what they were instrumental in is when, and you will get more information for that, you haven't seen your Warden Smith report yet. It's in your documents that were there for your monthly report from them. But when the word of bill, it seems like it's going to get passed. And Congressman Rousher made sure that we were, had some language that was included that helped the canal subdivisions with dredge bowl disposal. So if there's certain items that are just relevant to Holden Beach that we can advocate for at the federal level, that's a policy item. That's just one example.
Thank you.
Any more question, questions from the commissioners? If not, we'll move to number 13. Ms. Ferguson?
Actually, I'm going to let Ms. Fennell handle this. It's the meeting schedule.
All right, Madam Clerk.
I've enclosed the proposed 2025 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule. All the dates reflect the third Tuesday of the month, and we recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion anywhere? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously passed. We're at number 14. Madam Clerk and Madam Interim Town Manager, whichever one.
Per Section 30.05 of our Code of Ordinances, the Mayor Pro Tem is elected from the membership once per year. You guys can decide to continue with the same Mayor Pro Tem, or we could vote for another one if you'd like. And if you do want to vote, I gave you ballots, but you could also vote outside.
What's the pleasure of the board?
We can just do it, I think.
What does that mean?
Can we not nominate from the board? Whatever the pleasure of the board is. I'd like to nominate Dr. Pavy's daughter to be Mayor Pro Tem next year. Okay. Any more nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tom Myers to continue as Mayor Pro Tem, but, okay.
All right. Any more nominations? Hearing none, I guess we'll do a ballot unless you have other ideas.
Did you lose your ballot? Huh?
You just write it down on a piece of paper and sign your name over it, sorry.
I found it.
Miss her. You need one?
No.
Congratulations, Mr. Tom Myers. You have successfully ran your campaign.
Cheapest one ever.
All right, we're on number 15.
Okay, I think that's me again. Historically, the official signatories for the town's truest accounts are the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and staff. Resolution 2410 updates the current signature card by designating Mayor Holden, Mayor Pro Tem Myers, and Finance Director, oh, interim town manager Ferguson and Finance Officer McRaney as our signatories. So we recommend approval of Resolution 2410.
Is there a motion? Please.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, anybody? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. We're on page two, number 16. Ms. Ferguson and Madam Clerk?
Our current fiscal operations supervisor is retiring, so staff proposes removing the supervisory duties from the current position and realigning the duties to Finance Officer. No changes to the salary ranges are recommended at this time, so we're just looking for approval of the proposed job descriptions.
Motion to approve the draft descriptions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. She unanimously approved. All right, number 17, same people, Ms. Ferguson and Madam Clerk?
Sorry.
The stars of our show.
We have received the updated fees assessed by GFL Environmental for people who utilize the voluntary curfew recycling program. The annual 2025 cost for people participating in the program will be $119.35 per bin. This is an increase from the current rate of $106.88. We need to update the fee schedule to reflect the new amount, so we recommend approving Resolution 2410. 11, sorry, 2411.
Motion to approve Resolution 2411.
Second.
Made and seconded. Discussion, anyone? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. Number 18, Mr. McRaney, you're going to get to speak. If Ms. Ferguson agrees.
The board's policy states that we transfer fund balance over 70%. Fund balance for the audit was at 146% this year, so that'd be a 76% transfer of lost in Asia. I believe it's 2.7 million.
Yes, it's page 53.
53, yes, 52, 53.
This transfer doesn't have to be done. Right now, it can wait till later in the year if you want to wait to see what comes up throughout the year, whatever pleasure it will be.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as is, 2419, to move the 2.783382 from the general fund to the beach inlet.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. You got the floor?
Mr. McRaney has suggested that we not transfer the entire balance, which I think could be a good idea, and look at doing some stormwater work. We do have an approved stormwater master plan. Those, the engineering work for plans and specs to do any of those particular projects has not been done yet. So we're currently in the process of trying to main, to get some grant funding. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. But it may be prudent to hold some of that money back and get some plans and specs done. So we just don't do a master plan, put it on the shelf, and let it collect dust. So I would suggest that we hold back maybe 300 grand. We also have another stormwater issue on the agenda tonight, and that has a price tag of $76,000. So I'd like the board to consider holding some money back to get some stormwater work done.
So we have 5.3 million in extra from the audit, so if we take out the 2.7, we'll still have an additional 2.5 million that hasn't been appropriated. In addition, in the budget, we have 223K that is available for reappropriation, so we can use any of that money. And on top of that, we have 6.7 million in the B part that is available. So if you look at the policy, it doesn't say that we can do partial. It says, this is the policy, and it says you shall transfer to the capital reserve fund, which means must. So this is, this is our policy. We should follow it, and we have plenty of money to do a $300,000 project if we need to in the next six months, because in six months, we'll be starting our new budget in June. So I feel like we should follow the policy. We haven't put money in here in this fund, and now that the Corps has said they're not going to be supporting us in beach renourishment, we have to start filling that bucket so that we can do it ourselves, or we're going to be in sorry shape if we do get a storm. And I think somewhere I saw what balance is in there, not that much, a couple million at the most currently in that fund. So that's, that's why I think we should be doing it per the policy. And we have, like I said, we have an additional 2.5 million even after we put the 2.7 million in the fund, and 223 in, that hasn't been appropriated in the general fund, just sitting there. And we have 6.7 million extra in the B part fund.
Yes, sir. This is from the 2324 budget because we had to wait until we got the audited financial reports, the results of the audit. So to me, this is money that was earned, then we should, we, we shall submit it. Now, we will have money this year. We're about to start the budget process. Honestly, I don't think we're going to get much done with the stormwater in the next six months that we have in this fiscal year. We do have money available to do some of it, but the key will be to budget that in next year's budget. That could impact how much we can set aside next year. But this is, this is money that's already been earned, and the policy states it should go to the sand fund.
Like, like I said, it's the pleasure of the board, whatever y'all want to do. But like I said, my recommendation would be to at least wait until later in the year to do the transfer, just in case something does come up, because it's going to be, when it, when it's over there, it's over there. That, that money's to be spent on beach earth when it's moved there. So you're.
That's exactly how we want it.
That's right.
You're not going to have the option to take it back.
That's what we need it for. It's our beach fund, sand fund.
That's what the policy is there for.
I think you should go by the recommendation of our, Mr. McRaney, our financial officer. We're not saying we're not going to put the money in there, but if it's, once it's tied up, we can't use it, and there's no reason we can't put it in in six months. So I would go with his recommendation. That's his job, and that's what we hired him for.
Does the policy allow us to do a partial?
No. It doesn't say anything about that. What is your recommendation, Kristy? Because I was unclear on, it says, your, your recommendation is recommend transfer.
Yeah, part of my line got cut off in the transfer of cover sheets back and forth, so my final version was supposed to be recommend transfer per finance officer's comments. I think what you can do, and I did check with Daniel on this as far as fleshing out the finances, but if you guys decided that tonight you wanted to do a partial, that wouldn't keep, it just says you shall do it, but it doesn't say when you have to do it, so it doesn't keep you from coming back later in the year if you wanted to do more. I think that there's some expenses that you don't know what you're going to have to encounter yet. For example, you have an RFP in here for finding a town manager doing a search. There's some things that weren't planned in the budget that are going to come up, and if you did some now and some later, I don't think that it could hurt you, but it is the pleasure of the board. The only other comment that I had at the top, Mr. McRaney already spoke to, which is when you put it in the fund, you, it does handcuff the money. So it doesn't give you any flexibility even in an emergency. One of the emergency things to consider may be what we saw this year, where storm events happened earlier in the year, and even though we skated through storm season, you could have an early May storm that still falls in this budget before your budget's passed.
But again, we have 2.5 million extra after we do the 2.7, and another 223 sitting, waiting to be appropriated, and 6.7 million in B part. That's a lot of emergency money.
You're, yeah, you're available to appropriate. You may not want to count on that number that you had before.
Should we call a question? We have a motion and a second.
So, Kristy, let me ask you, what type of, what amount of money would we consider holding back? Is 300 a reasonable number?
I, I don't think so, because like I said, this isn't saying you're not going to transfer the rest of it, but it, it keeps that money available.
I make a motion that we.
Wait, wait, you, you can't make a motion because mine's outstanding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I can revise mine.
Okay.
I can revise my motion to make a recommendation that we do the 2.483, if that's your recommendation. Do you agree with that, to hold back 300? Do you agree with that, to hold back three hundred of the two point seven? As a second, you have to
Yeah, I approve it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read back the amended motion so there's no misunderstanding?
I would say that it would be approved, the ordinance, with the revised amount of two point four eight three from the general fund to the beach inlet fund.
Floor is open for discussion again.
What about the RFQ for the, the, the pier engineering and all of that?
There's two hundred thousand in the budget for that.
Again, well, he made a suggestion that we wait till later in the year.
I didn't hear that. I think the mo, his recommendation is a little less, not, not the full amount.
He said later in the year. Didn't you say later?
Mr. McRaney, did you say?
Recommend transferring less than the full amount.
My recommendation on the sheet says a lesser amount. But either way, it's
I just don't see why we should tie up money that we can't get a hold of. We can transfer it in a few months.
I, I think, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We are so, are also crossing funding lines here. General fund normally would not be used to fund the pier, right? That's a B part line, right?
That's correct.
Unless we transferred it. So, and we haven't negotiated that cost, that fee yet. So, me personally, I'm good with holding back three hundred for now.
Can we call a question?
You certainly can call a question if that's what you want to do. Are you calling the question?
Yes, please.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Thank you, Mr. McRaney.
Ms. Ferguson and Mr. Clemmons?
Mayor Holden, if the board would like to speak to Michael Norton from McGill to ask any questions about what he's presenting, I'd need to call him at this time. So, it's at the pleasure of the board, but we'd need to take a moment.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't need to. They say they don't need to.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm always the troublemaker. In reading the task, I noticed there was a broad exclusion of king tide issues. And I do understand why that would be. But I personally live on the street that floods during king tides due to the stormwater system. And I believe there's a pretty simple fix for that. I don't know if similar issues exist elsewhere on the island. So, my only comment would be is can we perhaps adjust that tasking or have that be based on what they find after they do the stormwater inventory? If I'm making sense.
You do, but I would prefer him to answer that question on whether they could do that. So, if you're good with me taking a moment to call him?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and read all my stuff.
Before we do that. Chris, what do you think? Do we have things? Do we have other issues than what I've got on tarpon?
Well, I don't think so. But that one right there on king tide there, that was what we I would have been able to say without that.
You and I talked about these backflow preventers on the end of some of these storm drains. Is it something that we could take on a separate venue? I mean, I've priced them. They're three thousand bucks.
It may be possible, but what I'm thinking in my mind, a lot of these areas that I think we have those issues, there is actually going up over the bulkhead, and there's no pipe there.
Right.
I guess it would take some footwork to see how many places actually have a pipe. If it's got a pipe, you know, you could put a, a burger on there.
So, I'd be willing to, could we do this? Go ahead and get the task done? And should we discover these things? Then perhaps we could modify the task to address those specific areas later.
I would, I would think unless there's something that stands out there, Rick, I would think we've got one on the street there, guy, who thinks it's got a pipe. And that would be a first single fix.
I don't know.
Right.
Be a private conversation.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but I'm, you want me to just go ahead and read up here and then check them out?
And no need to call.
Okay.
Sorry, I got to turn there.
No, I
Go ahead, Mr. Clemmons. We're trying to get order back to the chair.
This is in reference to additional areas concerned for our stormwater master plan. The board asked McGill to be contacted regarding additional areas concerned for stormwater master plan. The tax proposal involves survey work and analysis to add three streets in the east end of the island and canal streets. It provides a six, it rejects a six-month waiver following notice proceed at a price tag of seventy-six thousand one hundred dollars. And which would require a budget amendment if we elect to proceed. And she, as Christie stated earlier, Michael Norton, he will have a fine if he given income.
Okay. You ready for motion? Whatever you want to do.
I move we accept it and move forward.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, any more discussion?
Could you add that you want to pass the budget amendment to that?
I have a question on the budget.
Okay, so you want to
I mean, we do have, Daniel, we do have, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Unappropriated, a balance available for appropriation of two hundred and twenty-three thousand? Why are we not using that? Why are we going into savings instead of just appropriating something we got set aside?
A lot of that's kind of eaten up by other
He needs a microphone.
A lot of that's got eaten up by some staffing issues and various task groups on the board.
The board made a directive that has been followed.
I'm sorry.
The board made a directive that has been followed.
Okay. Okay. Take it from savings.
So, you're going to amend your
No, no, I didn't.
She wants you to add the
The motion stands. Oh, oh.
She wants you to add You can have a separate motion if you want. I just wanted to include, if you're doing the budget amendment, that I'd prefer the amendment be included in it or a separate motion.
Okay, including the budget amendment.
Second.
Thank you.
Alright, Madam Clerk, now read the motion back so everybody can understand what the motion has been changed to.
To accept it and move forward and to accept the budget amendment.
Alright, more discussion? Anybody? You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Alright, are we on number nineteen? Ms. Ferguson, Mr. Clemmons?
If we're on twenty?
Did we just finish nineteen, didn't we?
Well, we got two agendas here.
The loose one is the one you should be following, not the one in the book.
Madam Clerk, where are we?
Twenty, Attorney Moore's item.
Up there, so people can hear you. Or that, that one.
So, it recently was brought to my attention that the contract between the town of Holden Beach and Bowman-Murray Hemingway Architects P.C. is still active, even though work was paused on that, I think about a year ago. I spoke with the firm, and it's questionable as to whether the completed portion rises to the substantial completion threshold that was needed to automatically terminate the contract. And since they did not terminate when it was paused, it's still active. I would advise the board to terminate this contract so that you can make whatever decision you want with the RFQs coming up. This decision will not affect your ability to reselect this firm or who you can select other than this firm as well. I just don't want any issues to come up under the general statutes without terminating this agreement before entering another one.
So, I'm going to make a motion to terminate the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three agreement for Holden Beach Pier Design between Town of Holden Beach and Bowman-Murray Hemingway Architects P.C. for convenience and direct the town attorney to send written notice informing Architect of BOC decision to terminate as agreement requires.
Second.
Alright. Anybody want to speak to the matter?
You mentioned, is there a monetary piece to this?
We're paid up as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
It's what they told me when I spoke with them.
So, in other words, we're terminating all the, the, the plans that were ready to go a year ago. We're going to terminate it. So, we can't go back and use them again. We're just terminating because we are choosing maybe another engineering group?
So, there's a, an issue under the statutes as to selecting another engineer when one is already employed by the town on a specific thing. And I would like the town and the engineering firms to avoid that. So, this just terminates that agreement specifically. So, the town is free to enter into a new agreement with those architects or engineers. Is it architects?
Architect, yes.
Architects, sorry. I keep thinking engineers. Or to go with whoever they please from the RFQ. This just opens it up so you have a blank slate to choose from whoever you would like to choose from when you review the RFQs later. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Ferguson?
I, I asked Sydney to look into this because there did seem to be an issue that if the current firm is not selected, that there could be some back and forth between the firms, and the town could be brought into the middle of it under the code of conduct for engineers. So, she did some research. She contacted Mr. Hemingway, and it seems to be the cleaner way before you make a motion to then select another firm for the next part of the project.
Daniel, can you tell us how much money was involved in that first contract?
I cannot. My, my question was just about her comment about the threshold.
That was just the amount of work that was done as opposed to we're paid up, yes. I did confirm.
Mr. Hemingway, in agreement and understanding what, what we're doing?
Yes, I spoke with him, and he understands. And again, this does not preclude you from choosing this firm again when you review the RFQs. This just ends that contract so that there are no issues going forward. It's more just a
Yeah, I think we understand. I just want to make sure we didn't have any legal ramifications coming from Mr. Hemingway.
I spoke with him, and I told him my intention with the termination. It was solely so that you guys had a clean slate to select who you wanted for the RFQs.
Alright.
And you don't, you don't recall how much that original contract was for?
You know, I wasn't around for that. I think I have it at home somewhere. Ms. Ferguson might know. I don't
I don't have that in front of me to answer you right now. We'd have to get that answer back to you.
All I know is that we paid for the work that was completed on it before it passed.
Was ready to go.
Call a question?
I mean
Anybody have a question or call a question?
You call the question?
Yes, please.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Alright, thank you, ma'am. We're on number twenty-one. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. So, the board received four RFQs back from the architects, engineers that are interested in the project. When it was sent out for submittals to come back, you guys didn't really say who was going to be in charge of scoring it. Or they're really, at this point, we haven't put I, I can tell from the RFQ that what we said we were going to judge them on criteria-wise was professional experience, management and technical expertise, past performance estimating, and experience in maintenance plans. Additionally, we were going to make sure, we said that they had to submit their forms, which it looked that all of them did, then were completed. And of course, in the statute, it says that North Carolina firms have to receive preference and some weight in your scoring when they're comparable with outside of North Carolina. So, with those things in consideration, I think you guys just need to decide as a board who intends to rate the firms and then what kind of weight you want to put on each of the things that were in the RFQ.
So, I'd like to make a motion pending the termination of the CMH contract that we direct the staff to award the RFQ to HDR and to move forward as appropriate.
A second. Discussion?
So, I have already done my rating. And I feel like RF, HDR was by far the number one firm. I have a problem with most of the other three because they have already had a chance to do some work on the pier. And it, their estimating was extremely poor across the board. I think we need some fresh eyes on this project, and the other three options don't provide that. They failed to come up with realistic estimates in the past. So, that's why I am proposing that we move forward with the HDR.
That's a motion.
Yes, it is.
That's motion and second.
And Mr. Myers made a second.
Yes. First, I'd like, are you done? First, I'd like to thank staff for sending us the responses very promptly after receiving them. That did give us adequate time to do a review. I went through them very thoroughly, evaluated them against the criteria that you listed, Christie, that was in the RFQ. Based on my analysis, I've reached the conclusion who I think is best qualified. I think it is HDR. Most importantly, I think I am ready to vote. I'm ready to move forward. I don't want to delay this project any more than it's already been delayed. And I think that we can make the selection at this time.
Any more discussion? You ready to vote?
Yes.
Hold it.
Excuse me. As Tom just alluded to, we've had a plan a year ago. And it's taken a year for us to get to this point. So, this is what it's going to take to move forward. I think we should agree as a board to move forward.
Still ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Record shows unanimously. Alright. Number twenty-two. Mr. Myers, Ms. Thomas?
Yes. As it's stated in the cover sheet for this topic, we could benefit greatly from engaging an executive search firm to help us with the process of evaluating and selecting a new town manager. I think that's the most efficient way to move forward. I have compiled a list of what's typically involved in those services. It's, it's on the cover sheet. And the League of Municipalities has provided a list of potential search firms and also an example of RFP that we can use as a template to come up with our RFP. So, I move that we direct town staff to, one, develop an RFP for the services that were listed using the materials from the League of Municipalities as a template. And two, provide a copy of the RFP to the Board of Commissioners as soon as it's available. So that if, you know, and if we don't contact the town clerk with any concerns by January third to go ahead and issue it, I don't want to hold it up if there are no issues with it. So, that's the motion.
I second.
Any discussion?
Christie, is, is staff able to meet that schedule?
Well, it's just ASAP.
Yeah, I, I will defer to Town Clerk Fennel. I think that we can. I think that a large part of that work is that she would be doing that so that I will certainly review it. But we don't want to have any unfair advantages there. So, I think that, is that agreeable to you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we have an estimate of what this service is going to cost for an executive search firm?
We're requesting the pricing.
I was just asking. I don't, I don't think we need to go to the expense for the executive search firm. I think there's resources that we can advertise the job that won't cost the town extra money. And we would be able to use those resources.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. Are you ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to two, Madam Clerk. Public comments on anything you want to talk about. If you raise your hand, be recognized. Come to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Dr. Caldwell?
My name is, my name is Phil Caldwell. I live at 121 South Shore Drive here at Holden Beach. These comments These comments are directed at Commissioners Parfus, Myers and Thomas. Please explain to me, a constituent, why you didn't include in your discussion to fire David Hewis, Hewitt, Dr. Dyer and Mr. Smith. You intentionally withheld information from them and ultimately from me. As members of a board, you have an obligation to openly discuss among yourselves matters of personnel. The town manager works for all of you, not just the three of you. U.S. citizens are governed by consensus, not by rule. Not ha, not having three commissioners meet without having a called meeting was obviously twisted in the matter of David's dismissal. I want to present a scenario, and this is only a scenario, that you three look upon yourselves as a block means only one of you has to think, the other two being followers. Thus, with Commissioner Dyer and Smith being excluded, one of you three could have made the decision to dismiss David. Another way of looking at this is one of five. I believe open, open discussion with your colleagues is healthy. Sereptitiousness in a governing body is not healthy and I don't think this board is healthy. I have a solution for this. The citizens of Holden Beach need to change the Holden Beach Charter to have six commissioners with the mayor being the deciding vote in, in case of a tie. I have no idea, I have no idea how to go about doing this, but would be willing to help anyone who does. Back to David. With him at the helm, living here has been pretty neat. His staff and my wife Sally's, in my opinion, is outstanding. Writing this, I think of Officer Jessica Camaro, who once was involved personally in a family tragedy and has become a friend. Would this have happened if we had lived in Los Angeles? Our dealings with Christie, Tim, Chief Dixon, his staff, the clerical staff, Mr. Clemmons has been nothing but productive. David was always a willing listener and it's reasonable, a quick response. So, again, what was your problem with David, I would like to know? And while up here venting, I'd like to comment on Commissioners Thomas's understanding of this separation of church and state. In my opinion, it is wanting. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter, 108 Starfish Drive. I would like to add what Phil said, the, in July of '17, we decided we'd go with these four-year, one-staggered terms. And, you know, that might sound great that everybody knows what's happening, you know, already. We've got two people there that are already knowing what's happening. But for people that do the numbers, you can see that we have, Rick and Rick are going to be up for voting for election in December. And so, that'll leave two people. So, anybody that knows, we line up six people, get all your guys to vote for that one person and you've got three people. The way we used to do it, we used to do it every two years. That's the same way Charlie Miller does it, he's our representative toward the state. That's the way David Rousher does it, he's our federal representative. I don't think you guys deserve governor's terms, no matter how good you are. If you're that good, we'll reelect you after two. But there's sort of a, a whole lot, whole lot to be said for being able to flush the toilet all at one time instead of having to dip a lump out every couple of years. So, I would say that we need to do another referendum and take our charter back the way it was for the last, since 1970, '69. And let's vote for everybody, every two years. And that way, when we come to vote, we can vote for the five people that we are six, that we think are the best over and over and over again. We don't have any, they're laying around here for four years. Because it's already been one hell of a year for this four-year term. And I would like to just see everybody go back to the way it was, that's the way, that way everybody's vote counts. Nobody can get a group over here to vote for one person or, and keep three in there. And so, we got this three, three-two crap going on. And I would ask the, ask the board to look for that referendum in November where we can vote on that. I appreciate it.
Anyone else want to speak about anything on your mind? Yes, ma'am?
Marty Airwood, 114 Trent Street. I think I want to end on a more upbeat thing. Starting with the Halloween trunk or treat, the turkey trot, Santa Claus, Sandy Paws, reindeer runs. This staff is phenomenal. And I have been at all of them, but the last one I was out of town. And we've had great turnout, everybody has had fun, I've missed anybody I haven't seen. But I want to thank the staff, not just the, just the ones here, the Parks and Rec Committee. They work really, really hard to try to keep things moving on the island, to be all-inclusive of everybody and to do things that we all enjoy. Thank you, Christie, for heading that up. Chief Dixon, I know with the turkey trot, we didn't expect 500 people out here and they didn't get lost this year. But I just want to say thank you and happy Merry Christmas to everybody, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to anything? Yes, sir?
Jim Bauer, 329 OBW. I have to have a counterpoint to this. I think when these people were elected and elected by very good margins, that would assume a mandate. What's happened is we're now talking about having millions of dollars in the coffers to spend and to use for the betterment of the community, something that couldn't be said just a few short months ago. So, I think that's, I think that's a very, very positive thing. I also wish, I'm usually never here because I have to run, I have to go to fire department training usually before the meeting ends. But I would like to hear people be more civil about how they speak directly to these people, whether you like them or don't like them. I, I just, I can't believe some of the vitriol that comes out of some certain people's mouths here. You might not like them, or you might like them, but they're human beings and they're, and they're trying and it's obviously a thankless job. And I'm saying this for every single person beyond the podium. So, I think it would be nicer if everyone could be a little bit more civil and think about, you know, what if that was your sister or your brother or your mother, you know, or your dad? And that's all I have to say, thanks.
Anyone else want to speak about anything? Yes, sir?
Keith Smith, 105 Durham Street. I think I was pleased with tonight. We are moving forward on the pier, I appreciate the vote on that. I would remind everyone who paused us to give us the time that it took to do this. So, on your honor, being respectful, your honor, you can't on one end delay it and then on the other end go, hey, let's get this done because it's been delayed. Like, if you caused the delay, you don't get credit for retrieving that back. It's just, you know, just, anyway. But your honor, I say it respectfully, is that good? Secondly, I think as we end this year, one thing I would like for us, for the board to consider is, and really Phil just kind of actually wove it in there, I didn't even expect that. This year, probably one of the, the things that I think was probably the most disappointing thing was a longstanding agreement, from my understanding, that we had with the local chapel. That we had an agreement that we'd work together. And for some reason or another, we decided to discontinue that agreement. I would remind us, if, if we didn't have a Creator, there would be no Creator being, created beings. And if we quit paying homage to the one that created us, we run the risk of losing out on his blessing. This island has been blessed, we can see the marks of it everywhere. From the sandy shores to the canals to even the King Tides, you can find beauty in everything. So, I would admonish, or not admonish, I would encourage the Board of Commissioners to rethink that and as we go into this new year, maybe reestablish a working relationship with the chapel. If nothing else, and if you don't believe there's a Creator, that's fine, but what if you're wrong? And I'm right? Having an agreement with someone that doesn't exist is not the worst thing in the world. But if we are right and there is a Creator and we just kind of kicked him out the door, we might have made an eternal mistake. And so, not to use this as a podium to preach, but I think, well, I'm not separated by church and state, ma'am, your honor. Is that good, your honor? I'm not separated by church and state. I can say whatever I want to as a citizen. And so, you can smirk and laugh all you want to, but it's treacherous ground when you start dealing with the Creator of the universe. Well, you're right, if he doesn't exist, what does it matter? But if he does exist, it does matter. So, thank you, guys, have a great year.
Anyone else want to speak about anything? All right, we're going to move on then. Thank you so much for your comments. Mayor's comments, number 24. Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year's coming, I hope. And thank you all for being here and being part of Holden Beach and sharing your ideas. And with that, Mr. Myers?
Yes, thanks everyone for coming and those of you participating or watching online, thank you for being involved. I am excited about moving forward with the pier finally, I hope we make good progress from here and I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Smith?
Again, I want to echo the, the thanking everybody for being here. Thank, thank the staff, as we've heard this evening. You guys put on Parks and Recreation and the security here on the island. You guys do a great job of keeping the residents happy as well as the people that come and enjoy visiting our island. I hope everybody will have a happy and safe Christmas and we look forward to seeing you all in a prosperous 2025.
Ms. Thomas?
Just wanted to thank everyone for coming and have a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Dr. Dyer?
I'd like to also thank the staff, they've been working very shorthanded. Our police department is overworked and they're still helping out with events and they're working really hard to keep us safe. And Public Works is keeping us flushing and drinking, so I really appreciate that. I'd like to thank Christie for stepping in as interim manager. Got a tough road to hoe, thank you for joining us and everybody have a safe holiday.
Mr. Parfus?
Thank you all for coming out, Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year.
Mr. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned, Merry Christmas to...